So, yeah. I guess. Why? What was your interest in running for city commissioner and? About, you know, housing inspections?
Well, for the. For city commission was because I've actually worked at the city twice. Did internships during my master's program, but I've been. In the city of Manhattan almost decade now. My husband was military. My son went through Manhattan schools. I've been at K state in some capacity since fall of twelve, two thousand twelve. But I, when I first moved into town, was also a renter. And I lived in a house that had severe issues. Basement walls that were so severely cracked, they had big metal plates with bolts. And we were told as the tenants, we were to tighten the bolts every six months. And as rain and water would come in and flood the basement. We get big bubbles, we had mold all down in the basement. There was a lot of. Lot of issues, the front porch started to sink. So, you know, I, when I first moved into Manhattan, I was always under the impression. Cause I had lived other places where they had a rental inspection program. And so when we decided to get off post housing, I called and said, hey, how do I get an inspection done there like? We stopped doing that like two years ago. Oh, okay, so then I had post kind of do like a little ad hoc thing. And they at least did find that the windows were painted shut. That we did need some couple of outlet plates and such, but didn't actually do like the survey of the basement and such. Which if a proper city inspector had probably been through there, that might have been caught. But not all my rentals in Manhattan were bad. I am now a homeowner here in Manhattan. I've been a actual homeowner in other states as well. And actually a landlord in the other states when the housing crisis hit. And we weren't able to sell our house for a while, we actually rented. So I've been on both ends of the spectrum. And I would never put my tenants through the stuff that I have seen that happens in this town. I find it absolutely deplorable that the housing stock is in the situation that's at. I do know that Jared McKee, when he had been a city commissioner, had spent about two years trying to get the. Housing inspection program through. He did get pretty close. He has had people come to the table and agree to a program that's pretty close to Lawrence. So I would very, and I've spoken to Jared a couple of times. I would hope to be able not to start at square one, but kind of pick up where he left off. And make this a reality for the renters in Manhattan. They're a large community of renters here in Manhattan. And they're not just students, there are seniors here. You know, families and they all have the right to have safe and affordable and, you know. Clean housing, it should not be something that you should ever worry about. Of it's my cave, you know, is the basement going to cave in? With my kids sleeping upstairs. That's not something I would ever wish upon anybody else. So I would hope to be able to help address that as a city commissioner, so. But I was really curious, you know, what are some of the issues that you guys are having as tenants? Here in the city that I would be able to, you know, go to the. The table with and start talking and humanizing this and getting people to understand that this just isn't, you know. Ten, twelve, or how many of your number of students? It's actual people, you know, they need to actually care about what's happening to the people in our community. So. I would love to hear what, you know, you guys and your concerns are.
Yeah, like I, like I said, there's a couple renters who couldn't make it tonight. One of them in particular. Audrey Wilson, who had, she was actually in the K state collegiate with the whole, you know, bat infestation. I won't. I actually interviewed her and we have a video up about it on YouTube for renders together M H K YouTube channel. But um. Yeah, I guess. Before I tell, you know, my experience, do you have any experiences, Vince?
Definitely not as notable as like Allison Gary or the tenant that you mentioned. So I, and I think, and honestly, I think your stories are more like compelling with. And especially too, because you also rented like houses similarly. Monica, so I think, I definitely think that like rehearing your story is really beneficial.
Okay, yeah, my story is not. Too bad from what I've heard from other people. But um. I guess. You know, when I first started got into, I guess, this housing system. When I, you know, I get, I don't really count the dorms, but I guess the dorms are a part of it. But they do, you know, a pretty good job of making sure the houses are safe in case state. But you know, once I moved out, I, you know, started looking at houses and. You know, first of all, people don't realize how kind of stressful and how much of a pain it is kind of looking through houses. Because you have to be able to find a house where the lease starts where you want it to. Because there's different times where the lease starts. You know, it could start in June, start in August and, or you know, May. And if you're, you know, moving all your belongings out. At a certain time when you're supposed to move out, it can be. Kind of a headache to find storage or, you know. Where are you going to stay? But anyways, when I was touring some of the houses, I've kind of noticed. A lot of the houses near K state and near Aggieville. Weren't very well kept up. And some of them, you know, you, you might expect it from houses that are a hundred years or older. But there was some, you know, newer ish houses that just had. You know, really noticeable. You know, issues with it, they had, I remember one in particular in the basement. You know, if the smell doesn't, you know, turn you around. There was these huge cracks in the foundation, in the foundation wall in the basement. And you could see dirt that has been pushed in by, you know, by water. So it was scary for, you know, in case it flooded and just having all that dirt that's in the basement, just like that. And there was these huge rodent feces. I don't know if it was so big, it looked like it had to be from a raccoon or something. And they were just like, there was people living there and they were just showing it, just like, do you want the house? It was just, it's just amazing, you know, you, you kind of come into this. With an open mind thinking, you know, like, oh, well, you know, they're, they really want you to rent their house. And so they're going to do everything they can to make it, you know, look good and get you to rent it. And I guess that's just not the case. And I also, so I eventually found a decent house. Then after I moved out of that one, we moved on, I moved into one in Anderson. And in the basement and in the bathroom, there was, you know, mold everywhere. And there was also, we had a bit of an infestation. Unfortunately, they were able to put in the lease that, you know. Bug or anything, any infestations are not their, not their problem, so. When we called about that, they just said. Oh, well, have you, the first thing they said was, oh, maybe you shouldn't be eating in your rooms. I was like, we're not eating in our rooms. The ant infestation is in our kitchen and in, you know, the bathroom and. It's not just like, you know, every once in a while, like in a house, like in any house. You'll, you might get like a spider or two. Cause that's pretty normal, like those things, those kind of bugs are pretty sneaky. But I mean, if you have a whole bunch of ants invading your home. Especially your kitchen where your food is kept. It's, it's kind of an, you know, it could be a little bit stressful, you know, when, especially when you're in school and you've got stuff going on. And you just kind of want to like, you sit down and relax and then all of a sudden you get bitten by an ant. And it's just like the little things that start to add up and you start to just. You just get a little bit more, you get more and more stressed every day.
Most people come home and relax, this is your comfort.
Yeah. This is, it's kind of spoke like housing is supposed to be, you know, your sanctuary where you're just away from the elements. And you're away from the worries of the world. And this is, you know, this is your world where you can sit and relax and be yourself and kind of recharge for the next day. And also I deliver inside for insomnia cookies at the moment. So I get to see a lot of houses and I get to go inside of a lot of houses. Or not like in a lot of apartment buildings and see a lot of houses. And it looks like it's, it is a pretty widespread issue. And unfortunately, we kind of have like a culture here where people. Just they think, well, like, oh, well, I just need to move into a better place, you know, that it's just, you know. These are just college houses and so. Who, who cares? Well, you know, I'll move out eventually and I'll get a good house and. Not enough people kind of realize like, you know, housing doesn't really have to be this way. If you think about decent housing, you know, the, the bear, the base, the foundation of. Housing, it shouldn't be ant infestations or mold or I've heard a lot of problems with flooding. People's basements will just flood. It should just be, you know, not like. A great, amazing house with a pool. It's just a just regular old house that has air conditioning, heating and doesn't flood, doesn't have infestations. And especially in some, you know, Audrey's case where she had a bat infestation and. Which that kind of put her life and her pet's life at risk. Because she, she actually works at the rabies lab, right? And she, you know, while working there, she learned that one of the number one reasons. Or a many student, like one of the big reasons, you know, students go there is because of rabies shots from. I think from, she said mostly from bats, but you know, a lot of students go in there for, for rabies shots. And. You know, rabies is not a laughing matter, it's not a fun thing to play around with.
And the shots are extremely painful.
Yeah. But um. If you wanted to like learn more, you can look at the, the video, but I'm just going to summarize it up for you. Essentially, she, you know, she had bats flying around her house and. She could get bit, her pet should, could have got bit. And they like defecated over like on her furniture. And, you know, guano, bad droppings are also not, you know, a fun thing to have. They can, you can get really sick off of that. And she did everything she could to, you know. She, she, she got to the house eventually, but. She wanted, you know, the person responsible for that property, for that house to, you know, make amends to. You know, fix the problem and. You know, we kind of expect for it to not happen again to anybody. But she, what she did, she suspected that they knew about this and. They didn't do anything about it before and after she moved out, of course, they, they did, you know. They looked at the property and I think they tried to get the bats out. I think that was tricky because. I've heard that bats are, you know, an endangered species, so they're protected, so you can't just. I heard it's not legal to just remove them. And. Yeah. So she, but they wouldn't let her out of her lease, so she had to keep paying the lease for that house. And she ended up paying for two houses at the same time while doing school. And at the end, when it was time for her to get her security deposit, she paid five hundred when she first, you know, moved in. And she only got ninety dollars back. And that's because she's, they spent almost all the security deposit on themselves cleaning up their own mess. So it's not. It's not a fun time and. It's all, I can't imagine the stress and the financial burden, especially when you're doing school. And you're, you need to do your best in school, like you need as much time as you can to really focus on your studies and your homework. And. With, and you know, not worrying about bats and having to work, you know, multiple jobs to pay for multiple properties. So. You know, looking at this, there really isn't a lot of, you know, accountability or anything preventing this from happening. What I like to do is kind of think about. Incentives, like what are the incentives for renters and what are the incentives for like landlords? And I know there are good landlords who want to, you know, provide. You know, they want, they want some. Some way to contribute to society, just like many other people. And, you know, providing people with housing is one way to do that. But I also believe that there are also landlords who kind of see this as more of an investment opportunity. And any good investor knows that, or any, and any businessman, you know. Wants to get more out of their investment than they put in. And what's kind of, what's pretty easy to do is for. Landlords just to not, you know, repair things if they can get away with it. Because you know, sometimes some of this could be very expensive. And it could just be a landlord's, you know, they might have gotten themselves into, you know, a situation that they can't get out of. You know, they, they've spent money on a property, but they don't have a lot of money to, you know, keep it up or repair it. But I mean, regardless, I don't think anybody should be, you know, be able to put, be put in that situation. Students, they don't have, and I don't think, you know, really anybody is unless you're an inspector. I don't think, you know, they don't have the expertise to, you know, when they're showing these houses to look at things and know like, oh. This foundation's cracked, like this might, this is probably going to flood or, you know, oh, there's, you know. This is. You know, these windows aren't, you know, very new, there's all going to be a lot of infiltration or, you know, et cetera. So. I lost my train of thought here. So, yeah, I, I really believe there should be at least some, something, you know, I think. Landlords shouldn't be able to rent out a place unless, you know. We know a hundred percent that this place is safe and it's not going to put anybody's lives at risk or their property at risk. And. And I think for most, you know, houses that this isn't, you know, a problem. But it's just for, just a few that. That are just kind of ruining it for everybody else.
Well, I think now you hit on a couple of points that really kind of address why I'm interested in putting in a renter special program. First off, you mentioned it's like a business. I see it like having any other business in the city of Manhattan. If you have a business, it gets inspected, you go through some type of licensing. You have to go through the process. So if you have a landlord who's purchased a property who, you know, doesn't have the funds to fix it up. Well, it's going to be caught up front if you're going through the inspection program. Because it's going to be, you know, inspected and go, hey, you've got these issues. You need to address these before you could rent it out to somebody. So they know ahead of time, you know, that, hey, we can't rent this because we don't have a license to rent it. We haven't met the criteria yet. And they'd have to take care of that, but then you don't have a tenant who's stuck in the middle. With, you know, having to deal with the unsafe conditions with the landlord who knew ahead of time that there was something going on, but they may not be able to. Well, I'll fix it a year from now after I've collected rent or whatever. That's not fair to the tenant, you know. So having something ahead of time. Looking at Lawrence's plan, they have incentives for the landlords. If they go through and have an inspection done and they have less than five violations now, some of them are. Like major violations, if you have one, it's not going to happen. But if you have less than five minor ones, then they have a inspection program where it's, you get your property inspected once every three years. If we go through and this is good and you have less than five, then we're going to give you a waiver for the next inspection period. So now you want to get inspected for six years unless your tenant calls in that there's a major issue. So then they're not having to pay this constantly because they've kept up their property. They're obviously doing well enough, you know, they're, they're not the habitual problem. So there are ways of, you know, incentivizing it for them as well. And there's, you know, breaks for how, you know, how many units they have or such like that, so. You know, but the fact of the matter is, is that anybody, doesn't matter if you can afford, you know, a three hundred dollar bedroom or a hundred and fifty dollar bedroom. You know, when you go in there at night, you should not have to worry that the wall's going to collapse on you or dirt's going to come in on you. Or bats are going to fly over your head and bite you. This is not something that you should have to conserve yourself with. You're at home, you should feel like, hey, if there's a fire, the fire alarm's going to go off because that's been inspected. I'm going to be able to open the window and I'm going to be able to crawl out because it's not painted shut. You know, I'm going to make sure that I don't have, you know, if there's a fireplace or there's gas in the house, then hey, does the carbon dioxide. Detector work? Such as these things to make sure that you're safe. And if you're in an apartment building and there's so many units, then hey, do we have the fire extinguishers that we're supposed to have on this level? You know, does each unit have these? It's just. Not only just the right human thing to do, but it's a smart business thing to do as well. So if you're going to be a landlord, you know, you don't want to take on this massive liability. You know, so it's, it's beneficial for them as well. I think they just have to be able to have, you know, explain that, listen, we're not trying to, you know, make you take a house that's a hundred years old. And make it to modern, you know, standards of, hey, I have to have by modern code. So many light switches or so many power plugs, you know, along the wall every ten feet. I'm not going to be able to afford to have, you know, my walls knocked out to put in three new plugs. Okay, college students probably going to be okay with getting one power strip and plugging things in, okay? They're not really, really worried about that and seniors may not be either. You know, there are a lot of other communities that also rent here. But it should be, hey, I just want to make sure that the, there's a plate that covers this, that it's not like sparking. Or there isn't like old tubing wire, you know, that's going to maybe cause a fire. We're going to check those type of things and make sure that you have a safe place to live. So, and to your point, that's exactly how I got into the house I did. I moved into Manhattan Thanksgiving week, the army didn't give me a choice, they moved me here. And so I had to find housing by December first. As you know, housing does not come available until January. So I had two houses to pick from. I picked what I thought was the better. Did not turn out to be so, and the army did not, they had us on a waiting list for eight months. So what was I going to do? Go take my son that was, you know, in fifth grade at the time and go live at the extended stay for eight months? Probably not, you know? I couldn't afford it then, I'm certain that you couldn't afford it, you know, it's, that's not what you do to people. So if they're going to have a rental property, it should have already been licensed and ready to go.
Yeah. And I just wanted to say, one other thing. When you said it could benefit landlords, like I, I totally agree because, you know, these inspectors. They're, you know, well trained and well educated. And so they're not only just going to inspect the things that are immediately a danger, immediately, you know, a problem with the house. They can spot things that are sort of in motion, you know, they can see a crack in, you know, your down basement wall. And say, hey, this, you know, this could turn into, you know, a disaster. It could, you know, your house is settling and so, you know, who knows the basement could, you know, collapse in or something like that in the future. So they could turn, you know, maybe a thousand dollar repair. You know, save you, you know, instead of paying ten thousand dollars in like a few years from now, you can just spend a thousand dollars fixing it now. Because, you know, there's no.
To jack up the entire basement.
Cause um, there really isn't any, you know, educational requirements or any kind of training or anything for a landlord. If you have, you know, a house and you have it registered with the city, you know, you could start renting it out. And just having that, you know, rental inspector, just, you know, when nobody's living there and, because, you know, as a landlord, you're not. You're just going to go in the house to make repairs and just see if everything looks right. You're, nobody's going to be living in, in there, so you're not invading anybody's space, but just have somebody come over. Take a look at the place and, you know, just make some suggestions and. Or give you some warnings like, hey, this, you know, if you don't, you know, do something about this, this. This cheap fix can turn into a very expensive fix, you know, later down the road and. And so, yeah, it is, it's not only good for keeping, you know, tenants safe, but it's also good. For landlords, so they know what's going on with their property. And it could potentially even be good for the city. Depending if they're making, you know, if the inspections are more private or, or public. But I mean, if, if the city has a good idea of what's, you know, how certain areas of the city affect the housing, you know, of like one. One area is like prone to flooding. You know, if there's a trend there, then the city could, you know, potentially act on it. Maybe there's some sort of infrastructure they can put in to prevent, you know, these houses from flooding. If the water table's, you know, too high, maybe we need, you know, some sort of, you know, ditch or some way to alleviate that water or. You know, so. And, you know, prevent future disasters, so there's, you know, a lot of potential for good here and.
It's good for the community overall to have a, you know, a housing stock that's safe, you know, and makes people want to stay. I mean, how many students who come to K state who live in these conditions want to stay once they graduate? You know, do you really want to stay in a community that hasn't supported you during the time that you've been here? You know, you may end up moving away, you may come back later on, you know, and you know that I, you know, I've made totally enough money that I don't ever have to worry about this again. But then at the same point in time, there's always that little bit of like, why wasn't I part of the community then? Why didn't I matter enough then? You know?
Yeah. And yeah, it would be great to, you know, include. You know, renters who, you know, they may, they may not live here forever, but live here for a time to just like include them in that conversation of, of housing. And not only safe housing, but affordable housing, because I know the city's starting to talk about affordable housing. It's kind of interesting with some of the ideas they have, but um, it would be really nice to just, you know, just talk to tenants. And see, you know, what they think. Because that's one of the reasons I really, you know, that I, I love this group. Cause when I first joined, you know, renders together meeting like a year ago. It was when sort of Brandon Irwin was, you know, the head leader for this group. You know, he just asked me and, you know, how, how's my housing experience and what I thought about it? And it was very, it was very refreshing and. It feels great just to have somebody, you know, ask you, what, what do you think as a render? Because the people closest to the problem are usually, you know, the closest to the solution. And yeah, I just wasn't really used to that, you're not really used to having people really, really be interested in your thoughts and the experience you had and. Just what you think about it. Because I think if we can get, gather all of these, you know, experiences and perspectives, you can put together. A better picture of, you know, the problem and a good idea of the solution.
Well, and as the people involved, you know.
Yeah.
You have to be humanized, they, they need to understand why they should care, you know? And I get that there's the economic reasons too, but maybe it's because you don't want your, you know, young. Group of maybe possible community leaders or the, could be, you know, the next generation here leave. Because you didn't treat them well, or maybe you don't want your grandmother or grandfather living in conditions like this. I certainly didn't want my young son, you know, living in a house where I was afraid it was going to collapse.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want students to go off and then, you know, encourage their kids to come here, you know, they're not going to be, they're going to be less likely to encourage their kids to come to K state if. If they remember their, you know, housing experience was just awful here. if they remember their, you know, housing experience was just awful here. Do you have anything to say, Vince?
One of the things, this is sort of like adjacent to what, well, I guess one of the things that you said about Audrey, like losing a significant amount of her deposit was kind of reminded me of a time that I was visiting a friend in Toronto who moved there for graduate school. And I was talking to her, I mean, obviously the prices there are like astronomical. But I was like, oh, how much did you pay in your like security deposit then? And she was like, oh, we don't have security deposits here. And I just think that one of the things we, like a lot of the conversations we have are just like so centered on like what the, you know, desires of landlords are. That we forget that, you know, like renters also have economic perspectives to think about. And, you know, especially with like security deposits, like it's just such an interesting thing because it's like the one area of law where there's like a presumption of guilt. You know, like where you're supposed to be assumed that you're innocent in any type of a case, either civil or criminal, but you know, in uh, security deposits, you're basically landlords are saying like, you know, we know that you're going to vandalize our property, you know, we know you're not going to be a good steward of this property. So we're just going to assume that you're guilty and maybe you can get some of your money back at the end. But we're going to keep it anyway. Cause we're going to keep it upfront anyway. Cause you know, we're the ones who are the judges of your character. And, you know, I mean, that's just like such a simple way to make housing more affordable would just be to say, you know, landlords can obviously, if there is like real damage, can always go to like small claims court, right? In Kansas, if you have, if the claim is less than $4,000, you can go to small claims court and you don't even need a lawyer. You just show up. You know, make your claim and the judge kind of decides all that. And, and, you know, the state law also says that a security deposit cannot be more than one month's rent. So I don't know how, who, what landlord is getting $4,000 anyway. So presumably every landlord would be able to collect more than they could get from a security deposit at like a small claims court. But I just think like, and there are just some really common sense things that could, you know, they, in some ways they seem kind of like unusual because we're so used to the way things are now, but there are some pretty common sense things that, you know, would be deviations from where we're at in the present that could easily make housing more affordable and provide more incentives to like, you know, landlords would actually have to demonstrate. That would also require them to document what the conditions were like before you moved in. Cause then if they had to, if they couldn't just keep your security deposit, but they had to prove that you caused a damage, they would need a before and after picture. So that would also leave them, that would also cause them to be more accountable in some ways. So that's just the thing that I'm in particular that I care about. I, you know, not many people talk about it yet. Hopefully that will change in the future, but there are some places elsewhere and usually like bigger cities that have that kind of a a rule, but I think it would be great if more Kansas cities and towns had, you know, that kind of a rule.
Right. Well, I know that Lawrence, another thing that they kind of do with the landlords is let them know, hey, when we come in for inspections, we contact the tenant. Um, and we work through with the tenant to come see the property. And if the tenant doesn't let us in, you know, we'll go get the, you know, search warrant that we have to, to be able to get access to the property. But they don't require the landlord to, hey, now get into the tenant and you've got to chase them down and you gotta do this and then we're going to fine you if you don't do that. They don't have to worry about any of that. If they've got the license for the place, the city takes care of that part. Like we will get the inspection done. You know, so I think that's one of the other things too is, you know, showing that it, it's going to benefit them as well. You know, but it's also just going to make sure that like you were saying, hey, I want to know what was reported on this house before. They do keep records. If they have their license, then they have to have records of the last inspections and everything. So you already know what issues were. How long did it take to address? Were they addressed? You know, these are those type of things that you would be able to see as a tenant, which would at least hopefully give you some peace of mind on those things. But yes, I agree on the, the housing deposit. I mean, first and last month's rent plus a security deposit because I had dogs. You know, that was pretty pricey to move in and I don't think a lot of people have it, you know? And we only were able to do it because the RV gives you so much for moving allowance, you know, but that's not a typical thing. So, yeah, I, I totally agree that there's a lot of room for improvement on a lot of different ways, but definitely at least making sure that the housing is safe would be the first for this community. So.
Yeah, I don't think we can do anything, you know, with housing if we just can't get safe housing. Cause that's just, you know, the basics. That um, and it's just too bad. I don't, it's just too bad that um, here the city hasn't really valued that. You know, housing for renters that much because me, I mean, housing is just the foundation, you know, the little foundation of our whole society here. Uh, sorry, that's my cat. And if we just can't, if we can't take care of housing, then it's just going to make other things like, you know, learning and going to work, you know, much harder. Especially if, you know, people are having to work multiple jobs to pay for multiple houses or, you know, having to pay a lot more for the security deposit. And I know last year, um, we had the People's Forum and so we made the case for, I think we should have phrased it as a safe housing by rental inspections, but we phrase it as mandatory housing inspections, which, you know, if you're not really, if you don't know very much at all about the housing issues here in Manhattan, it's kind of sounds scary. And yeah, I know some of the, you know, the pushback was, you know, with arguments like, well, this is against, I think that what the fourth, the fourth amendment, uh, legal search and seizure. And just, there was one of those ridiculous, one of the commissioner, the commissioner candidate said, it was like, well, because I'm, uh, we made the comparison of, well, you know, any food industry, they're going to have to get, you know, a health inspector to look at it because, you know, people have the right to know what, you know, what's in the meat. Is this actually beef? And, you know, what are the conditions you're, you know, making the food to serve? And they made one more, there was like, well, people aren't allowed back in the kitchen. So, but with housing, you can, you know, they, they look at it before you rent it and it's just like, well-
The food that was cooked in the kitchen.
Yeah.
It goes in my body.
Yeah.
You want to know what's going on back there.
And it's just like, well, we just want to know what's, you know, up with housing and, you know, I don't think anybody, you know, and the average person isn't trained to identify the things that housing inspectors are, are trained to, you know, to see and it's just kind of ridiculous putting that on, you know, an 18-year-old college student's shoulders to, to, you know, look at all these houses and to trust that they're going to know that it's perfectly safe. Nothing's bad going to happen. And it's, it's kind of ridiculous that, you know, it's an option where it's just like, we, we have these houses that are, they may not, they're unsafe or they may just be, you know, prone to infiltration. You know, they may be prone to like ants coming in or just, you know, the windows aren't very well taken up. So there's a lot of cold air that comes in during the winter and stuff like that. Like as if this should be a choice, as if you should have the choice between, you know, unsafe housing and, you know, good housing or decent housing. It should just be, you know, the floor is just decent housing, you know, no matter what, no matter where you stay in Manhattan. You know, your property and your life will be, you know, perfectly safe. And that's just, you know, a good piece of mind. And then if you have the extra money, you can go get, you know, you can live in some luxury apartment, you know, next to Aggieville or something like that, but yeah. Yeah, it's just, I, I wish they would, you know, the city would kind of, like I said earlier, just like understand incentives and realize that, you know, if you're just some shady landlord, like there's a lot to gain if you can just get away with this because somebody's paying rent. And part of that rent is, you know, it's supposed to go to keeping up the house and making repairs. But if they can just get away with just collecting it. And then what I've noticed, like some of the houses on Bluemont where there's like over a hundred years old and you know, there's always going to be some college students that live in there because of the location is so good. Cause if the location is so good, some students, they just kind of like, well, it's with walking distance to school and I don't want to get, you know, a hundred and I forget, I forget how much the parking pass is, but I don't want to have to get a parking pass. Huh?
Hundred and eighty dollars.
Hundred and eight dollars. And luckily I've lived uh, in some houses that were pretty close to Manhattan. So I didn't have to get it uh, once I got out of the dorms. Um, but in like some of the Aggieville houses, like it's so close to Aggieville, you know, if I go to the bars, I don't have to worry about getting an Uber or, you know, driving home and and they'll just, they'll, they'll make that, that gamble where they're like, well, it's so good. I guess I'll, I'll rent it out and it's, some of those houses are kind of scary looking and and if they can just get away with not having to, you know, make repairs, then they can just sell it to some other buyer who's just going to demolish it. And which that's actually what happened to my house. My house got demolished. Cause they, I, I told them, I was like, I don't, I'm not going to allow you to take any of my yeah, security deposit. If you're just going to demolish the house afterwards, there's no, because they'll take that money for cleaning and they'll take your security deposit for any like little repairs and what was scary was I was, like some of the blinds were so old, I was trying to use them to, you know, close them and the thing would just snap off. Cause I guess the plastic was so old. And I was so scared because they already had the security deposit. They can, what they told us was maybe we're like, this, the, the buyer isn't a hundred percent. So there, we might, you know, sell it, we might not. And I was afraid they would make that case where they're like, you know, we don't know yet. So we're just going to do this thing just in case we have to rent it out again. You know, we're just going to take your security deposit to make, make the repair. Maybe make the repairs, maybe clean, hire a cleaning crew to clean it, um, in case we have to rent it out. Luckily they did not. I was, you know, actually pretty surprised and I was glad. But yeah, they, it was poor housing conditions and I, I think they, they definitely didn't want to repair it, knowing that they can just sell it and, you know, have the new buyer demolish it.
Right. And I'll use what money you gave them towards their closing costs or something.
Yeah. And you know, with that extra money, they, they can, you know, they can get, they can, you know, they can use it for themselves, go buy themselves, you know, a nice car or something or for their business and buy a whole new house and then, you know, invest in their business. So as long as they have that, you know, that um, you know, that regulation of, hey, you're, hey, if you want to rent it out to the public, the public needs to make sure it's safe. And if you do that, you know, there's no problem here. Clearly you're, you know, you're using the rent money how it's supposed to, to upkeep the house. And then you have, you know, that, the, the rest of it to, you know, support yourself and, you know, everybody's happy. All right, well.
I know it's a Friday night. I do appreciate both of you. First off, just the group letting me, because I mean, I have reached out. I know it is a private group. So just talking to me and explaining, you know, the experiences you had. I know those are personal. So I appreciate you sharing them with me. I would love to be able to keep the line of communication open and come to another session that you guys have. I, I really am wanting this to, to get done. So I want to make sure that I've got, you know, enough gathered to be able to get to the table and humanize this and explain the importance of it and get it, get it in place. Cause it's, it's deserved and it's needed.
Yeah. And thank you so much for taking your time. Your Friday evening to come on a Zoom meeting. Cause I mean, I personally, I always dread Zoom meetings, like no matter what. They're way better. Once you like get into it and start talking, you get used to it, but just like, I don't know, just that uh, you know, it's like, it's not as bad, but you know, like right before you get a shot, it's just like the needle is going to be, it's going to hurt so much, it's going to hurt so much. And then you get it and you're like, oh, it's just a prick every time. But, but um, yeah. Zoom meetings aren't that bad.
They always allow us to connect and see people, you know, like at least a good thing of having a face and a name. So.
Yeah. Um, yeah. And it means a lot to, for you to just come and actually like listen to us and take the time to listen to our stories. Cause because it's like, who, who else are we going to tell? I mean, I'm going to tell my mom and my dad and me and some of my friends, but it's just like, you know, they'll say, well, that's too bad or something should be done about it. But um, it's a lot more productive.
Think about it.
It's way more productive. Once you have, you know, other people who have experienced that and you know, telling it to you who, you know, really wants to, you know, be a leader here. And um, yeah, thank you so much for coming. We all will have these regular meetings. Just for, just to have the space for anybody who wants to come and talk about housing. Cause you know, I learned a lot. I, I learned something different every time. Like I didn't know other places, like what Ben said, I didn't know other places didn't do security deposits. I always thought that was a new thing. I think I heard one time that there was some, I think it was like in Chicago or someplace, they don't do applications. They don't charge you for applications. But they do here. But yeah, and then we'll have a, like a work meeting. I think last time we had like a couple of days, we had like the Saturday after the relational meeting. But I think that one will be better if, you know, whoever wants to come, we can work out a time because you know, like tonight, I don't think a lot of people were available. You know, like Audrey just got her, her vaccine shot. So I, like my, my girlfriend got it and she, she was in a lot of pain and she was very tired. But I heard if it's like that, it's, I guess it's good. So I can- it must be working. So, yeah. Do you have anything else you want to say? Do you have, I think you had an announcement, Vince?
Oh, well, you can just share that on social media, but I was just going to talk about the Kansas uh, housing resources, like they're doing their, I think it's the first time in 20 years that they've done a statewide comprehensive survey. And I think that the Manhattan slash Northwest, they sort of divided the state into like several things. And I think it was May 18th, but it's, it's at the link that I shared. So you can just share that out whenever.
Okay. That sounds good. Um, yeah, um.
Thank you both.
Here, I'll stop.